Hey, so we are back on. We just concluded our close meeting. One of the subject matters that was discussing close was the cash bay trailer park lease agreement. We need a mover and a seconder pertaining to terminating the lease this upcoming season. Conseil Adis, Conseil Denis.
It is moved by Council Denis and Cailin, seconded by Council Denis and Cailin, that the municipality, it resolved that the West Nippeson municipality hereby gives notice to the operator of the cash bay trailer park regarding termination of the lease pursuant to section 10A of the lease agreement dated April 20th, 2021.
And the agreement will be ended in October 2021. I'm sorry, maybe I didn't hear correctly. Oh, notice, sorry, can you just re-read it, Denis?
That the municipality of West Nippeson gives notice to the operator of the cash bay trailer park regarding termination of the lease pursuant to section 10A of the lease agreement dated April 20, 2021. So that just refers to the section that authorizes the 60-day notice in the lease.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Any objections? So can objection? None carried. I do know that I'm looking at the time and there are pressing matters also that needs to be dealt with this evening as far as resolutions. So by speaking with our Director of Corporate Services, if there's no objection, I'm just going to go through the agenda and propose what can be deferred at our next meeting for this question. I'm looking at committee of the whole. We have one subject matter, Council Chris. Bonusing, can that be deferred to our next committee meeting? Yes?
Absolutely.
Okay, no objections? None? Pertaining to Public Works Committee, we have a list of capital projects and updates. Are there any questions, specific questions to any of the projects that's on the list? None? Any objections that it be deferred?
Okay, but you're asking the question, can we say, there's a specific question?
Well, for capital project for Public Works.
Okay.
Do you have a question pertaining to that list?
No.
Okay. Okay, so I'm just making sure, any objection that that be deferred at our next committee meeting? Bearing none. We move on to community services. We also have an update pertaining to capital projects under community services. Are there any specific questions pertaining to a project on the list? Conseil Adis?
Well, I want to talk about the swimming pool and I think Council Leo would like also to know. I think he asked it. So, so I guess it would be directed to Monsieur Plaine.
So you're seeking an update for the pool at the Cash Bay Park?
Yeah.
Can council be updated pertaining to that specific project, Monsieur Plaine?
Absolutely, through you, Madam Mayor. As indicated, we have received an engineering, an engineer's report on recommendations, scope of work and whatnot. Staff is currently reviewing the engineer's report. We've recently been in possession of the information. It's a lot more complex than we originally thought because it's a public pool. The building code has changed, just an old pool, and now we have to meet today's code. So that's why we had to hire an engineer and as soon as we possibly can come back to council, we will with a more detailed overview of the next steps and that file is still ongoing.
Okay, there, there is a rumor circulating at the park that, and possibly, I'm not sure. I just heard that possibly the cost of the project may be relatively much more than what council approved as far as budget. Is that anticipated?
I'm not aware of any cost increase at this time. Johnny Belange is in possession of the engineer's report. And so he's analyzing the data right now and as part of the engineer's report, there were cost estimates provided. And there are different options provided by the engineer as well. So as soon as we have those specific details, I wouldn't want to pander to any rumors at this point, but we will bring you facts and details at that time, Madam Mayor.
Do you anticipate that there's going to be an opportunity for the contract to be awarded this year?
Timelines are difficult to look at right now. It's going to depend on the construction season, the availability of contractors, the scope of work that, and the options that we are able to move forward with. And how quickly the construction season is going to close. I mean, getting contractors right now is a problem. You'll see on certain of our capital updates, we have projects that we've tried to tender out that we're getting no bids on. So again, that's a question that's difficult to answer, but we are trying to move this file forward as quickly as we can, Madam Mayor.
So council can anticipate an update in the near future?
Absolutely, yes.
Conseil, you got the message?
Yes, your worship. So council will have the opportunity to either approve or, yeah, that project before the contract is awarded.
Well, the project was already approved?
Yes. It's in the budget, I saw it's in the budget, but I mean, the money hasn't been spent yet, so that's what I'm seeing.
Oh, the money, well, there's the cost involved is that the retention of the engineer. We're going to have to wait to get the update. And as far as our Director of Community Services, he's unaware, you know, of actual cost, if it's over the 90,000 or if it's below, we're going to have to wait for an update very soon at one of our next meetings. So we know exactly if it's in line with our budget.
And Madam Mayor, if I could just add, as per proper policy, if we do see that the project will exceed the approved budgeted amount by council, we have to bring it back. So as soon as we have relevant information to provide back to council, we will certainly do so.
Okay. Any further questions pertaining to the pool? Conseil Leo, does that answer the question that you were looking for?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Are there any other questions pertaining to projects on the list for community services? No? Or find that it be deferred and brought back at our next committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay. We can proceed to planning. We've got some resolutions. Is there a mover and a seconder to authorize the closure of an unopened road allowance? Do you have drive and bridge? Yes?
There was an item, a second item under community services that we would either need, we would need direction on whether it's being deferred or dealt.
Okay, you're right. Okay, so we have a request from community group seeking authorization for installation of mermaid sculpture. We had a memo. I know that the volunteer group are very anxious. They would have appreciated to see the mermaid that installed last year. We're wondering if it will be installed this year. But from the memorandum that was provided to us, it's for safety reasons and recommendations for installation at Zihaha Bay. There's two sites, I believe, and we have to pick direction which site. And also, there will be a need for retention of an engineer pertaining to the installation and the mounting. If I summarize them correctly. Was there anything else that you needed to add, Monsieur Plaine?
No, I think you summed it up. I did provide that detail today to council. You know, that we can't hide the fact that there are safety concerns with that statue. And we would have to certainly have it mounted to mitigate the risk to the public. So that would probably mean at least 10 feet high. It would need to be engineered. It would be need to be done in a manner that, you know, our insurers are agreeable to and that we are mitigating the risk as much as possible to the public. So it's, it's not as easy as a project as some might think it is. So that's why we are here at council looking for direction. We don't have budget amounts, estimate, estimated cost amounts to get this done. Again, until we get an engineer and propose a design and get some costing on this, there's no way for us to even put a number out there as what we think could cost.
Okay, Conseil, you got the message?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I think maybe for spending time tonight, deciding on the proper spot, would let the staff do their survey and maybe the firm that's going to establish the security, they might prefer one spot to the other for security purposes or for land stability or if it's a fairly heavy structure, the quality of the land under it does become a very serious part of the picture and it might affect the cost. So I would rather let Mr. Plaine do his research, obtain the information, and I support the project in principle. I think it's a nice idea. But let's, let's get this together and then we can support it officially.
Okay, and just a point of clarification, would that be part of the $40,000 budget that was allocated to the Sturgeon Falls Beautification Committee?
It was part of the Sturgeon Falls Beautification budget, yes. There's an amount allocated. I'm anticipating it could be more than what's, what they had originally budgeted to make sure that we're addressing the safety concerns.
Okay. I was next. Conseil Adis?
Well, I, I support what Council Norm said and furthermore, like, we need to have a number before we approve anything more than the 40,000 that's been approved right now. So we need to have all the information to be able to, because I mean, it's, it's a big project. It's a lot of money and I'm not saying I'm not supporting it. I'm just saying in principle right now that we have to have all the number before we do anything else.
Okay, Conseil Dan?
Just as a point of clarification, my question is through you, Madam Mayor, to staff. Is that it's not total, it wasn't $40,000 just to put the mermaid up. That was part of the budget. So the point being is that there was other, there's other monies that are being spent on other things that the beautification committee is doing. So what you're asking is tonight is just for some direction on whether we want to move forward on basically what you want is to have an engineer look at it, hook up where it should be, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what you're asking for tonight in regards to, is that correct?
Yeah, that's one, that's one way to approach it, Counselor. We can certainly, if that's council's direction, that they, they want to move forward and at least investigate solutions and costs. We will certainly come back.
What I, what I'm hearing is, stick, um, stick, Monsieur Plaine, is that council needs more information?
Yeah.
And like to be able to find out from an engineer what's involved with the mounting, what's the cost, what would be proposed? And from there, they will have that discussion and provide direction.
Absolutely.
Okay, and the comment pertaining to 40,000, it's because 40,000 awarded to Sturgeon Falls Beautification, but it was part of a project within that 40,000.
Yes.
But we can't give direction more than saying we need more feedback and more information so we can make our decision. Conseil Dan?
My point was, is that the, through you, Madam Mayor, my point is, is what we're asking, what Mr. Plaine is asking is some direction on where to go with this. And it seems around the table, there was support, Counselor, Counselor Norm accepted. You know, he basically said that he approved of the project, thinking that it's a good thing. And other people have said that, you said that yourself in the meeting. So all I'm saying is that we're basically asking him, we're, we're saying the same thing, but we're at, we're giving him direction to move forward on the project and come back with more information.
Well, that's, we're waiting for additional information. So we'll further the discussion at that point, but in the interim, Monsieur Plaine is going to be doing some legwork.
Yes.
And it will come back to council. So are, is the direction clear for staff to proceed?
It is, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So now we move on to planning mover and a seconder for 6.1. Conseil Val, Conseil Norm?
It is moved by Council Denis and seconded by Council Robuchon. It resolved by law number 202279 being a bylaw to close the greenette drive and bridge road in the West Nippeson municipality and the proposed disposition thereof shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
Everyone read the memo. It's an exchange of agreement. We're going to be closing that section of land and it doesn't block, it's only to the advantage of the actual owner who resides there. Any objections? So can objection? None? Carried. The next one, to assume part of Kipman East Road, mover and a seconder. Conseil Denis, Conseil Leo?
It is moved by Council Denis and Cailin, seconded by Council Menet. It resolved by law number 202280 being a bylaw to accept, assume and dedicate lands for public farming purposes shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass. Part of the North half of Lot 11 concession tube being part 536R14862 Township Badro being part of the road, traveled road known as Kipman East.
Any objections? So can objection? None? Carried. Adapti. The next resolution to rezon property at 975B Laclad Road infield. Mover and a seconder, Conseil Val, Conseil Denis?
It is moved by Council Denis and seconded by Council Denis and Cailin. It resolved by law 202283 being a bylaw to amend zoning by law 201445 to rezon certain lands located at 975B Laclad Road and Field. From shoreline residential to shoreline residential exception zone 16 shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
Any objections? So can objection? None? Carried. Adapti. Next resolution to rezon property at 142 Count Road at Person Township. Mover and a seconder, Conseil Nafman, Conseil Adis?
It is moved by Council Robuchon, seconded by Council Denis and Cailin. It resolved by law number 202284 being a bylaw to amend zoning by law 201445 to rezon certain lands located at 142 Count Road and Living. From rural zone to rural exception zone 11 shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
Any objections? None? Carried. Adapti. We move on to correspondence in accounts. If there's no objection, 7.1 to 7.4 can be deferred to our next council meeting? Are we in agreement with that?
Yes, can I have just a simple question?
Yes, Conseil Adis?
And it's to our Director of Services. Do you think you'll be able by that time to, where is she? Okay.
Okay, I need to look at, okay, so is it possible that, do you think it's possible to have the disbursement, like the new report? Because I know you're working on it and.
And Madam Chair, if I can answer, I know we're a little off topic, but yeah, that's the reason it's not on, the, the red notice positions on this one is that the update that, to our software came late. It doesn't appear I can get back there yet and I wanted a bit more time to play with the, the new, to see if I can get the formatting that councils are accustomed to. So I certainly will see if we can get them in September. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any objections that these four subject matters be deferred to our next meeting? None. We move on to new business, the bylaw to appoint a new fire chief. Mover and a seconder, Conseil Val, Conseil Denis?
It is moved by Council Denis and seconded by Council Denis and Cailin. It resolved by law number 202281 being a bylaw to appoint a fire chief for the West Nippeson municipality shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
The appointment of the fire chief, did we, do we name him on the resolution? Do we name the individual?
It's in the bylaw that authorized, that the resolution authorizes.
My apologies, I can see the name on it. Okay, my apologies. I do see it now. My eyes are playing a trick. Getting over, okay, any objections? Open objection? None? Carried. Adapti. Bylaw to delegate authority during that period. Mover and a seconder, Conseil Nafman, Conseil Chris?
It is moved by Council Robuchon, seconded by Council Fisher. It resolved by law number 20227 being a bylaw to authorize the delegation of authority to the Chief Administrative Officer for certain acts during the lame duck period shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
Are there any questions? I have a question and possibly either Director of Corporate Services. We identified the CEO. Are we also allowed to add an alternate in the event of? And the reason I mention that is because I don't see the CEO at our meeting right now. So would it be prudent, is that true, Dan, that we see that's the a note, a note position is that, that is solution?
It's entirely within council's purview to appoint anyone we wish.
Okay. So I would propose a modification that we say CEO and/or alternate Director of Corporate Services. Would there be a seconder for that motion, Conseil Nafman? Any objections with the proposed amendment? Conseil Dan?
Point being is that it's a mute statement we're making because when the, when the CEO is not around, there's an actor. And the actor, why have to appoint that? Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, in this case, Council Dan, I do need a specific provision because it's a, it's for a very specific timeframe. So it would be preferable if there was a, if wish to have an alternate and have it actually in the bylaw. Maybe it would be to the most.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Okay, good, good, good point, Madam Mayor. Coming back to the amended resolution, is there any objection? So can objection? None? Carried. Do we need to adopt the resolution immediately for compliance audit?
We.
We do? Okay, is there a mover and a seconder? Conseil Adis, Conseil Nafman?
It is moved by Council Denis and Cailin, seconded by Council Robuchon. It resolved by law number 202271 being a bylaw to establish the 2022 Municipal Elections Joint Compliance Audit Committee shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
Any questions pertaining to, this is a standard practice and it's legislative and needs to be adopted. And it's a great opportunity because we're sharing the cost with neighboring municipalities or sharing the responsibility with neighboring municipalities. Any objections? None? Carried. Adapti. To award the quotation for the structural bridge repairs East McDonald and North South Bridges. A mover and a seconder, Conseil Val, Conseil Leo?
It is moved by Council Denis and seconded by Council Menet. It resolved the award for the structural repairs to the East McDonald Road Bridge and the North South Bridge be awarded to A2Z Civil at the total cost of 462,000 plus HST.
Okay, I would assume that everyone read the memo, both bridge repairs are, the bid price are over the budget allocation. East McDonald Road, the budget was 90,000, the bid price is 105. The North South Bridge, 90,000 was the budget and the bid price for the actual repair is 357. That's what I said, I can't send in. But I believe in their memo, it also states about the current condition and I'm not too sure if memory serves me right, but if, if it's not addressed now, it may come to a point where the bridge may be subject to closure because of the actual condition that it's in. So I'm summarizing it and I guess I'll direct the question to our Director of Corporate Services. The fact that it's way over budget, if we support this to move forward with the extra monies required to get the work done, that would come out from reserve?
Actually, Ms. Henning has, has proposed, or given us some updates to go along with, with the capital update for this in that there was $450,000 set aside for roadwork on John Street. And as, as we sort of engaged in that, then there was a request for sidewalks and we sort of had, you know, the, the scope of it, it grew. And so the, the John Street, it hasn't come back with the, the full budget to council and we're waiting for ECA. We are not going to get to the John Street project for Public Works, the water and sewer one, that's a different one, that, that is ongoing. But the John Street one for Public Works, it's unlikely that we'll even get to that in 2022. And so they're proposing reallocating the funds from John Street to cover the overage on this bridge and that John Street will come back to, to council for capital again next year.
That, that would be an option. Do we also have the option of saying that we keep the money set aside for John Street? Knowing that it's going to be coming back next year? And the extra funds that are required for the bridges, that we can take that out from reserve?
So those. Council can, can do that. The council can, can say that the extra money will come out of general reserve. I would just ask that our clerk kind of amend the resolution if that's the direction that council's going to go because we do actually have sort of a budget change then, whereas, you know, just reallocating the funds within the budget. But yeah, if, if council would prefer to actually do it from general reserve, absolutely, we can do that too.
Okay, and the reason I bring that up is because this council agreed that John Street capital project needed to, you know, had made, was unanimous in that decision in getting that project off ground.
It will happen anyway, but it won't happen this year else.
No, it won't happen this year, but then we've already planned that it would be done this year and for reasons out of control, it doesn't matter in the way that you're counting. So I'm just asking the question. So would council feel comfortable in taking the money of the bridge out of reserve so we can address the issue of the John Street project and make sure that money stays as a dedicated reserve for that project next year?
Yes.
May I add your worship?
Conseil Nafman?
If we do it this way, then we leave John Street in the budget at the end of the year. If the contract didn't go ahead, it automatically go to a reserve that is assigned to John Street. It has to go there and nowhere else. So it protects the John Street project for next year. That's the way I see it, yeah.
You're absolutely right and that's the, the message I wanted to give. So it does make a difference in that way. So I need to see a show of hands, who would be feeling comfortable in having a dedicated reserve for the project of John Street for next year? And taking the money for the bridge that's required out of reserve? So I do four. Okay, so we're not going to put in a dedicated reserve for John Street. So we're going to go with what's being proposed of reallocating the funds for John Street towards the bridge. Which was the resolution that was read. Any objections? So can objection? None? Carried. Adapti. Okay, we need mover and a seconder to purchase three vehicles, four by four pickup trucks. Which was in the budget. Conseil Rowley, Conseil Chris?
It is moved by Council Narabine, seconded by Council Fisher. Whereas quotations have been reviewed by the Director of Corporate Services and the Project Manager of Community Services. And the award being recommended consists of the best prices meeting specifications. It resolved the quotation for the purchase of three new half ton four by four pickup trucks, two of which are allocated to Community Services and one of which is allocated to Public Works be awarded to Toronto Chevrolet Buick GMC, having submitted a quotation of 171,220 dollars plus HST.
Okay, that's within the budget that we dedicated for the acquisition of the vehicles? Excusez-moi, avec le budget que le conseil a pas trouvé?
Oui.
Wait, okay. Any objections? So can objection? None? Carried. Adapti. Be it to award the supply of winter sand. A mover and a seconder, Conseil Adis, Conseil Val?
It is moved by Council Denis and Council Denis and Cailin, seconded by Council Denis and Cailin. It is moved by Council Lee, Council Lee Senecal and seconded by Council Levesque. It resolved that the quotation of the supply of winter sand for the municipality of West Nippising be awarded to A Mido Topsoil Inc. or Limited. Having submitted a quotation on the amount of eleven dollars and seventy cents per ton for the burner yard and thirteen dollars and seventy cents per ton for the Sturgeon Falls area, meeting all specifications.
Any questions or comments? None? Any objections? Ok in objection? None? Carried. Adapte. Um, are we fine moving forward, um, deferring the authorization to dispose surplus equipment to our next meeting?
We can do it now, we have time.
No objections? None? Uh, noise bylaw exemptions. Mover and a seconder. Conseil Alice, Conseil Nafan.
It is moved by Council Lee Senecal and seconded by Council Levesque. It resolved that council authorizes an exemption of the West Nippising Noise Bylaw nineteen ninety-nine seventy-five to the following gates and locations. R Vopalan one fifty-one Borvo Street on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. C La Font at four eleven Champagne Road, Sturgeon Falls on September third, twenty twenty-two. D and J Savage at two fifty-two Leclerc Road, September fourth, twenty twenty-two. And A Bull U one hundred Levert Drive on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Any objections? Ok in objection? None? Carried. Adapte. Um, the interest relief beyond property, I know there's a lot of documentation, probably. There's going to be some questions. I'm just going to seek direction from our Director of Corporate Services. Can this be deferred to our next meeting?
So, um, I, I, I believe so, but I, I did want to point out, as I said in my memo, that, um, you know, part of, you know, as Mr. Longladd said, you know, earlier, as part of our collections is that um, all of our properties that are in the situation that this property is have to the end of August and in early September will be registering tax certificates. Um, so I am going to continue that, that process of, of registering the, the property, um, you know. Which, which does, which does change, um, once, once things are registered, it does change things like, you know, interest write-off and, and things like that.
So what I do hear then, it would be, um, it would be critical for council to have that discussion before this process is done. For council to at least have the opportunity to discuss and make a decision.
I've got three minutes.
Two minutes.
So the timeline, um, to our Director of Corporate Services, what is the final date before it's registered?
So, um, all those, uh, properties that, uh, are still in arrears without, um, substantive plans, payment plans in place at the end of August will be sent for, for tax registration. Um, the length of time it will take for tax registration, I mean, you know, there might be like a week's grace in there. Um, as, as we actually go through the registration process before the tax certificates are registered, but we're, we're sending them, um, on September first.
It should be done now?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Conseil Leo?
Well, uh, what I hear from the, from the director, I think we say request, uh, to me is no. And move forward because I mean, you have, you have to go. So I say no.
Well, you know what? There was a request that, that was submitted and, uh, I did have some questions, but I don't want to delay the matter. Uh, either waiver at nine thirty and, um, there are two other resolutions that, uh, one of them, which is, um, important as well, the Community Improvement Plan and uh, the renewal for the contract of the West Nippising Links Hockey Club. So I'm asking the question, the Hockey Club, uh, the renewal of the contract, does it need to be finalized this evening to our Director of, uh, Community Services? Or can that, is it going to be too late also the first week of September?
No, we, we could potentially come back the first week of September, Madam Mayor. I believe their season only starts, um, around the, I'm going to go by memory here around the twelfth of September. So I think we would have time to bring it back to council.
Right. And the community.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, sorry, I've got a question for the, for the request for interest relief. Uh, we should vote on this tonight.
What does the resolution state?
We should not delay according to the public services. If I, if I remember correctly. Through you, Madam Mayor, to your.
Okay, well, yeah, okay. So, uh, our Director of Corporate Services, the request, I believe, was that it had to do with the drainage project. Which they identified that the project was going to be a certain amount and then we have the breakdown of how it was brought up twice. And they are asking, the lawyer of the property owners is asking, uh, specifically that we reconsider the drainage cost to scale it back to the original price along with the interest. I'm just going to ask their Director of Corporate Services if that's correct. It may not even be correct.
That, that does appear to be what, um, he is asking and, and you know, as I said in the memo, I've, I've declined the proposal before, which is why they've now directed it to, to council. But yes, they're asking for, um, it's not a reduction in the, the drainage assessment because you can't actually reduce the drain assessment. They're asking council to pay the difference of the drain assessment and to, uh, write off the interest and to maintain it as interest free um, until such time as it is paid at some unknown point in the future.
Okay, because I mean, that would create a precedent. So I say no.
So, uh, what would be your recommendation, uh, from the Director of Corporate Services? The fact that dealing with, uh, arrears, dealing with interest, I know it still is a council decision, but I'm just asking for your feedback.
Yeah, so you know, the, the whole issue of the, the difference between the drain assessment, this council actually talked about in twenty nineteen. And, and they gave them a little bit of credit for it in twenty nineteen. That's why they, there was the original offer of writing off interest up to twenty nineteen. Um, you know, the, the whole drainage process, as you're very aware, is a very public, very prescriptive, very legislated process and all the steps were followed. There should not, there, there was not any surprise in what the actual drain assessment was and, and what the difference is. And all of that came through council meetings and all of that came through public consultation. So I, I do feel that council at this stage now, this many years afterwards, agreeing to pay their drain assessment for them does open up a lot of, um, you know, sets the precedence for, for issues with drains. We deal with a lot of drains. And I, and I, I feel the same. If you're asking my opinion about the interest, council gave them, um, a break on the interest up to twenty nineteen saying, hey, fairness, okay. Maybe you were confused, but we'll give you the break. They did get the interest break during COVID in twenty twenty, even though the debt was from several years before. Um, and, you know, I have offered them proposals. I've offered them the opportunity to, to give me a counterproposal to met in certain ways. And none of that has, has occurred. So again, agreeing at this stage, this many years after the debts incurred to write off interest on someone's tax bill is again a very dangerous position, I feel, for council to, to take. Um, you'll be inundated with all kinds of requests to write off interest from people that haven't paid their taxes. Um, you know, there's not financial target to, I, I, you know, it's, it's a really difficult thing for me to, to, to support at all. I, I believe that the municipality has done the correct thing. I believe that, um, enough is enough. They've had ample time to, to make, um, payment arrangements and to, to clear the outstanding debt and, and here we are. Um, so if you're asking my recommendation, my recommendation is that council turns it all down.
Okay.
Your worship, like myself, there's no way, uh, that I would support granting them any reduction or any more, uh, delays. I think, uh, they had more than, you know, they were lucky to get that much of an extension. I guess maybe COVID was in, in their favor. But, uh, no, and representing the AI community that I'm involved in municipal drains all the time. There's no way I could support that. I mean, part, their question is, I think what they're asking is under the limits of that being legal anyway.
Well, for me, uh, like I don't know nothing about drainage, but I mean, I, I'm, I, 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 I can support anything to help, uh, some people, but if we create precedence, I think, uh, I'm also saying that if we're creating a precedent, somebody come back before my turn is over, I will support it also. So that's why I don't want to create precedent in a case like that. Sad, but it's reality. So.
Are there any questions pertaining to the subject matter? None? Um, is everyone in favor with the recommendation, uh, from listening to what we've been shared? Everyone is okay with that, that we don't proceed in providing?
You want a resolution?
Well. Okay, so I see that our clerk has our hand up and probably to tell us that we're in the curfew, well, we're beyond our curfew.
No, I, I just actually was going to quickly read the resolution for this side so that we could vote on it and, and that would official.
Okay, so Conseil Norm, uh, wishes to move the resolution Conseil. Second resolution.
It is moved by Council Levesque and seconded by Council Decent Cal. It resolved that council for the West Nippising municipality agrees to the proposal submitted by Norton Roseville, Brighton Limited in their December twenty-first letter with regard to the reduction of interest and penalties for the delorm, uh, property.
Yeah, we, we, we're not.
Just a, a second, I'll ask our clerk to reread the resolution.
The resolution is, the resolution is written in the affirmative because the question was asked in the affirmative by the lawyer. So the, the council doesn't approve it and just would not vote for it.
No, we're, we're, we're not in favor of it.
I know, but the clerk was explaining that the reason it's, it's written that way is based on a request from the lawyer. So we do not support providing?
Oh, we'll vote that resolution down. Okay.
So I'm going to ask, who is in favor of what has just been read? None? So the resolution is defeated?
Thank you.
Okay, so we have one more item, which is the Community Improvement, um, Plan. There is a resolution for that. I'll ask our clerk, is there a mover and a seconder so we can proceed with that resolution? Uh, Conseil Chris, Conseil Val?
It is moved by Council Fisher and seconded by Council Duhamel. It resolved the bylaw number twenty-two seventy-two being a bylaw to adopt the Community Improvement Plan for the West Nippising municipality. Confirming to force and take effect on the day of its pass.
And for those that are listening, uh, the program provides two financial incentives to businesses in West Nippising. We have copies of, uh, the entire jurisdiction. It's across the municipality. Business facade up to a maximum of fifteen thousand dollars per applicant with a total budget of forty-five thousand that was allocated for this objective. And the other one is the Business Signage Program, which provides up to five thousand dollars per applicant maximum with a total amount of fifteen thousand per year in this budget. That was approved that budget in the reference from the economic about the authority. Any questions or comments? None? Any objections? Ok in objection? None? Carried. Adapte. And well, the renewal for the contract of the West Nippising Links Hockey Club will be deferred to our next meeting. So now we need a resolution to adjourn the meeting. A mover and a seconder? Conseil Leo? Conseil Chris?
It is moved by Council Menet and seconded by Council Fisher. It resolved the bylaw number twenty-two eighty-two being a bylaw of the West Nippising municipality confirming proceedings of council. At its meeting on the ninth day of August twenty-twenty-two shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
Any objections? None? Carried. Adapte.
It was moved by Council Menet and seconded by Council Fisher. It resolved the meeting of council held on August the ninth, twenty twenty-two be adjourned.
Any objections? Ok in objection? Carried. Adapte. Bonsoir. Good evening. We will reconvene the first Tuesday.